Okay, call this meeting to order. Pledge of Allegiance.
(mimicking children's voices) 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 (mimicking children's voices)
Okay, the first order of business tonight is we have our town report dedications. And tonight, we're recognizing two people. These people are well-known for all their volunteering time and commitment to this community. It's truly an honor to recognize them. They are Richard Wallace and Carol Blodgett.[61.46][61.46](applause) I'd like to start out with Richard. Is it possible to bring him up to the lectern?
Read quick. Read quick.
Read quick. That's what he said.[86.99][86.99](whistle blowing)
Doing good, Richard.
He can sit down too.
He can.
He can sit right down in the front.
You want to sit down or stand next to Clint? Your call.
I'll sit.
You'll sit?
Yeah.
All right. Step back a little bit.
Yeah.
All right, sit right there. There you go, Richard.
Richard Wallace, and I'm reading this right out of the town report. And I thank Jean Lawrence for all this work. Nice joke. Richard's a native son of Waldaborough. Richard Evan Wallace, born here December 17th, 1942. A middle child of Evan and Edith Wallace. He attended local schools and lives on Dutchneck. Richard's brother, Leland, resides in South Waldaborough. And along with his parents, his younger sister Judy Studley is deceased. Richard's lifetime has been one of volunteering and serving others. He was a volunteer at the American Legion Bingo's from his youth until about five years ago. He was one of the original founders of the Waldaborough Historical Society in 1968. Serving continuously on Board of Trustees of the society for the past 50 years, he's completed terms as president and curator of the museum. Richard is the town's foremost historian and collector of artifacts. He's donated over 50 percent of the present collection house in three society buildings. He's constantly on the lookout for items pertaining to Waldaborough's history and has mened MacVisco and Jean Lawrence as they have written Waldaborough pieces for publication. The amount of history that is registered in Richard's memory is amazing. He's local treasure. Richard's work with the Garden Club for almost 50 years helped beautify many of our public buildings and sites. During his active club years, the kiosk at the Pine Street Landing was created as a joint project of the club and Waldaborough Historical Society. It remains so today. Richard advocated for acceptance of the town site oppressed by the society. He gave his talents with plants and flower arranging to the Waldaborough United Methodist Church for 50-plus years, and only recently retired from that job. His interest and support of the German church has been a passion. He's faithfully attended services there and created flower arrangements for services for many, many years. He's descended from one of the original German immigrant families that settled our town. It's really emotional, it really is. He's a 50-year member of the Minaga Grange, number 555. He took part in many Grange competitions and won awards while also holding office in the organization. Likewise, Richard was a very active member of the Good Luck Rebecca's and still maintains his membership in the Germania chapter of the Art Fellows. Though legally blind, through the kindness of his friends who drive Richard, keep in touch with these groups in the Midcoast area. He continues to support the Dutchneck Community Club, the St. Paul's Society, and Waldaborough United Methodist Church. With Jean Lawrence, he wrote, published, and personally sold copies of a local history book entitled "Richard Remembers Dutchneck" to raise funds to support St. Paul's Chapel in Dutchneck. A shy and retiring gentleman, Richard's contribution and knowledge are often overlooked or brushed off by many people. His life has been lived to educate, preserve, and celebrate his hometown. It's fitting that he receives recognition throughout his dedication for his many gifts to Waldaborough. Thank you, sir.[342.12][342.12](applause)
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're very welcome.[346.12][346.12](applause) Number two. Carol Blodgett.
Does she want to come down?
You can come up here, Carol, or do you want me to come down there?
He has to come with me.
Oh, yeah, that's a given.
We're talking together.
She's always got the good-looking men with her, too.
Always together.
We know that.
Notice how they're following her, too, hasn't it?
Oh, he's always a good... They're just...
It looks like a ukulele to me.
Carol Blodgett.
Hi.
Carol Anne Ahern?
Ahern.
Ahern. Blodgett grew up in Needham, Massachusetts, and graduated from Becker College with a degree as a medical secretary. She married William Blodgett on August 24th, 1963, and came to Waldaborough with Bill as he began his career teaching at Waldaborough High School. They made their home in the Old Red Cape on Winslow Mills Road, whose history goes back to the family of Captain George Smouse. Together, Carol and Bill have raised four children. Seth, an investigator for the Attorney General's Office in Augusta. John, retired from the U.S. Marine Corps and works for Midcoast Energy. Theresa, a supervisor for the Department of Human Services in Augusta. And Kathleen, who works at Chaney Insurance Business Office. Under Carol's guidance, the children attended Waldaborough schools and graduated from the Adam McValley High School where their dad taught in Social Studies Department. Carol and the family supported Bill as he ran and won three terms as the state representative from Waldaborough. Carol volunteered in the schools and became a teacher's aide at Miller Elementary School. She moved on to become the medical secretary on the floor of Miles Memorial Hospital in Demascada. She combined her family's responsibilities with being the wind beneath Bill's wings as together, they took part in many social activities associated with being in state government. Later, Bill was elected to the Board of Lincoln County Commissioners. Carol, for the past 24 years, has been right by his side in many events having to do with the county business and activities of the Democratic Party. Community activities have taken a large part of Carol's time. She's been a longtime member of the Lions Club, serving in offices and on several committees. She's been familiar sight at the vote and polls, the Waldaborough Day celebrations, been part of her volunteering agenda as his membership of the Waldaborough Historical Society, where she serves as secretary on the Board of Trustees. Carol and Bill are communicants of the St. Bernard's Catholic Church, have served that congregation over the years. Most recently, Carol has served two terms as vice president of the Waldaborough Women's Club. Professional woman, wife, mother, grandmother to 10, great-grandmother to five, friend, and a community member. Over her years of residency, Carol has served Waldaborough and its citizens well. When her help has been needed, from the smallest job of dusting a bogged schoolhouse to applying her secretary skills to correspondence or leading a committee, she has performed willingly. Presently, Carol is fighting a battle with illness, and in response to the role model that she has been, her family has gathered around her with cheers to proclaim "Blodgett Strong" as they support her in her fight for good health. By dedicating this town report to Carol, her community recognizes her many years of service for her town and expresses its appreciation.[561.32][561.32](applause) There you go, sweetie.
Thank you.[564.32][564.32](applause)
Thank you very much. Okay.
We're not going to force you to stay through the rest of this wonderful meeting.
Oh, really?
But you know she will.
Unless you choose to. You're more than welcome to, but...
Okay, no public hearings.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Adjustments to the agenda. We've got to add the warrant.
(mumbling) This is going to kill me. I don't want to touch him. Why give him that?[593.16][593.16](laughter)
He's a rascal. He is.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
They're just too cute. Is that cute little girl that you just picked up? I think that's his brother's granddaughter? Or that's... Yeah, that's granddaughter, isn't it?
I think it's that granddaughter. I think just has a boy.
No, I think that's his granddaughter.
He does?
Yeah.
Is his son old enough?
I think so.
So, we need to add this town meeting warrant to the public hearing.
Yes, you do. It was published.
Yeah.
And it was on the sign. It just unfortunately did not get on the agenda on Friday.
Right, yeah. So, I need a motion to do that.
I move that we put as item number four, number five, and move everything down one. Or do you want to do this before, after?
Right now, it goes to three.
Do you want to do it right now?
Okay, let's put it on as a 3.1 then.
Right. Yeah, thanks.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Any other adjustments? Okay. So, we'll deal with this public hearing right now. Does everyone get a copy of the warrant?
There were ones in the back. And all of the select boards should have a copy.
So, if anyone has any questions or comments or thoughts?
The one thing that I wanted to point out to everyone that is different than in the past, per the request of the Select Board and the Budget Committee... Do you need to get my office to give out some? We now have changed a couple of things. One is that we have put the count of employees also on the warrant so that you now understand what you're voting for when you vote for it. So, for example, Select Board has five part-time employees, Town Manager has one full-time employee and two shared employees. Town Clerk has one full-time employee and eight ballot clerks. So, that way, you understand it a little bit better. Also, we've had the request in the past from Glenn Melvin of the Shellfish Committee that we put something in there that explains that the Shellfish Committee funds that support that...
What article is that?
Foot 13.
The Shellfish Management Program. This budget is fully funded by license fees. No public funds are utilized. So, that's fee-based. So, that has been asked, I think, for I don't know how many times.
A long time ever.
And we found out that we can put things like this actually on the ballot. It just helps, it gives a little bit more information. So, hopefully, everybody will like that change.
Okay. Any comments? Anything from the board?
I'd just like to thank the Budget Committee and the Select Board for putting up with the new Town Manager's way of doing things during the budget process.
It was very confusing.[800.13][800.13](laughter)
It was confusing to some.
No, we got through it.
We got through it. Next year, you're going to breeze right through it. Change is never easy.
I know.
But you know what? The best part of the entire budget process was that John Higgins sang to me.
He's in the office.
He's right there. Oh, he's here! John, John, John sang to me, and it was "Will You Still Love Me Tomorrow." And I just, I just have to point that out, that I thought it was a wonderful budget process. And, you know, it's not often that I got, I get, there's a lot of times I break into song for no reason, but there's not a lot of times people answer me in song. So, I was quite impressed by that. So...
Good voice, too, huh?
Thank you very much. And I just want to say thanks for putting up with me. Appreciate it.
Are we going to go through these?
Normally do.
Oh, do we normally?
Yep.
Okay. We can do that. Do you want me to just read them off?
Yep.
So, Article 1 is to choose a moderator. Article 2 is to elect the necessary town officers by secret ballot. And that would be Board of Selectmen, Assessor and Overseer of the Poor, Directors of the Main Regional School Unit Number 40, Trustee of the Waldaborough Utility District, Trustee of the Waldaborough Utility District for one term. The other, there was two seats for trustee of the Waldaborough Utility District for three-year terms, and three Budget Committee members for three-year terms. And I should say, two Board of Selectmen or select persons, Assessor and Overseer of the Poor for three-year terms. Municipal Budget Questions, Article 3. Should any municipal budget question fail to pass, shall the town authorize the selectmen to expend an amount not to exceed 3 and 1/12 of the previous year appropriation? So, Article 4. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $35,542 for the office of the Select Board? And that's five part-time employees. Do I, do you normally read the votes that went with it?
No.
Just a question.
Article 5. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $159,375 for the office of the Town Manager? And yes, you should![935.55][935.55](laughter)
Then I see if there are questions on each one of these.
And we stop and ask if there's questions?
Yeah. If there's people, then people will.
Does anybody have any questions?
If they have questions, they will.
See, I'm learning as I go. It's my first budget.
If you do, as we, as she goes along, just...
Just interrupt me.
Interrupt.
Article 6. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $106,024 for the Assessing Department? It's Daryl, Daryl, stand up. This is Daryl.[965.43][965.43](applause) He's, he's okay.[967.43][967.43](laughter) You know, it's a, it's a hard job. It's biblical.
Somebody's got to do it.
Somebody's got to do it, you know? Article 7. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $194,207 for the Finance and Customer Service Department, two full-time employees and one shared employee? Article 8. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $99,494 for the Office of Town Clerk? That's one full-time employee and eight ballot clerks. Article 9. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $56,357 for the Municipal Building? And that is one part-time employee. And just so you understand, these numbers are not what the employee gets paid, it's the operating and the salaries and wages. So, just don't think that a part-time employee is making $56,000. Article 10. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $759,920 for Emergency Medical Services? That's four, four full-time employees and 28 per diem employees. And I also want to just state for that particular article that that is also offset, there's also fees associated with that that offset that amount. Article 11. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $166,508 for the Fire Department, 24 paid volunteers? Article 12. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $699,244 for the Police Department, seven full-time employees, one shared employee, and four part-time employees? Article 13. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $44,974 for the Shellfish Management Program? One part-time employee. This budget is fully funded by the license fees. No public funds are utilized. Article 14. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $17,390 for Animal Control? Article 15. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $5,076 for the Emergency Management Agency? Article 16. Shall the town raise and appropriate $80,160 for Fire Hydrants? And just so you know, it's not just Fire Hydrants. It's, it's for the administration, too, of our Water Department. So, it's not that we're paying that much money for Fire Hydrants. So, I have to figure out a way next year to maybe raise that a little bit more. Okay, Eileen's saying no.
The piece for the company that managed the Water Department come right out of the Water Department.
So, this is really for, because this is not how Main Water explained it.
This is 30 percent of the revenues that the Water Department needs to operate by PUC contract.
Thank you.
Just for hybrid rentals.
Thank you. Which we have to change then, but that's a whole other story. Article 17. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $19,831 for streetlights? Which will go down when we do the LED street lighting. Article 18. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $808,336 for Public Works? Eight full-time employees and one shared employee. Article 19. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $10,650 for Parks and Cemeteries? Article 20. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $26,455 for General Assistance? Article 21. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $15,646 for Social Service Agencies? And that would be the American Red Cross for 2,500, Mobius for 855, New Hope for Women $1,572, Spectrum Generations $4,444, Elder Care Network of Lincoln County $1,900, Midcoast Main Community Action $2,000, Healthy Kids $2,375. Community Service Articles. Article 22. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $82,635 for the Recreation Department, one full-time employee? Article 22. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $15,283 for the Friendship Street School? Article 24. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $95,272 for Community Service Agencies? Local Access TV, which would be Lincoln County TV, $13,668. The Memorial Day Committee for $1,000, Waldaborough Day Committee $1,000, Waldaborough Public Library $75,000, Waldaborough Snowcrawler $604, and Waldaborough Historical Society $4,000. Article 25. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $151,576 for Planning and Development? Two part-time employees. But this also, just so everybody's aware, includes a contract, a shared services agreement for our CEO that is new because we are sharing with another town. And also, we do not have a planning, a planner, a full-time planner. As an employee, they are a contract service with Maquette. So, that also includes those, that monies. I just do want you to think two part-time employees are making $151,000. Article 26. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $52,012 for the Property and Liability Risk Pool? Shall the town ra, Article 27. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $94,354 for Debt Service? Article 28. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $262,841 and transfer such funds to the Transfer Station Fund to fund Waldaborough's share of the Transfer Station budget? Two full-time employees and one part-time employee. Article 29. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $591,274 and transfer to the Capital Reserve Fund for Capital Improvements? And that would be Municipal Building $25,000, Friendship Street School Reserve $2,500, AD Gray $2,500, EMS Equipment Reserve $72,426, Fire Equipment Reserve $50,000, Police Equipment Reserve $22,000, Public Works Equipment Reserve $72,000, Surface Paving Program $250,000, Highway Construction Reserve $30,000, Sidewalk Program $15,000, Computer Resources Reserve $5,770, Trailer Reserve $15,000, Loader Reserve $5,000, Marine Park Reserve $40,000, Unemployment Compensation Reserve $3,000. Less transfers from other sources $18,922 for a total of $591,274. Article 30. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $2,425,282 from the estimated revenues account to be applied to reduce the 2000, I mean, yeah, 2018 tax rate? Local taxes other than property taxes $947,839, licenses and permits $68,427, intergovernmental revenues $258,221, charges for services $819,396, fines and forfeitures zero, other revenues $55,636, other financing sources $275,763. Article 31. Shall the town transfer the sum of $73,312 from the Local Road Assistance Block Program to fund the general fund to be applied toward the transportation program? Article 32. Shall an ordinance entitled "Ordinance Prohibiting Retail Marijuana Social Clubs and Retail Marijuana Establishments in the Town of Waldaborough" be enacted? Article 33. Shall the plan entitled "Town of Waldaborough Comprehensive Plan 2018" be enacted? Article 34. Shall the town vote to fix the 15th day of November 2018 and the 15th day of May 2019 when all 2019 taxes shall be due and payable in semi-annual installments and to instruct the tax collector to charge interest at 8 percent per annum on all taxes unpaid after said date? Article 35. Shall the town vote to pay interest at 3 percent annum on any amount overpaid on property taxes as noted in MRSA Title 36 506-A? Article 36. Shall the town vote to authorize the tax collector to offer a 2019 tax club plan to taxpayers who enroll no later than July 31st, 2018, who pay the total amount of 2019 taxes by monthly payments from July 2018 to June 30th, 2019, who abide by the requirements of said plan, who shall receive from the town in return for such payments full credit for such taxes paid without incurring any charge of interest? Article 37. Shall the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen on behalf of the town to sell and dispose of any real estate acquired by the town for non-payment of taxes thereon on such terms as it may be deemed advisable and to execute quick claim deeds for such property? Property which, in the opinion of the Selectmen, best serves the interests of the town by remaining town-owned property need not be sold. Article 38. Shall the town authorize the transfer of all unexpendated balances to fund balance and to authorize the overdrafts that may occur in the town operations in the 2018 budget to be taken from the fund balance? Article 39. Shall the town authorize the budget, I'm sorry, the Board of Selectmen and the Treasurer on behalf of the town to accept gifts, real estate, and certain funds, including trust funds that may be given or left to the town? Article 40. Shall the town authorize the Treasurer to waive the foreclosure of tax lien mortgages pursuant to 36 MRSA 944 upon finding of the Board of Selectmen that ownership of the property subject to lien would be contrary to the town's best interest? Article 41. Shall the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into boundary line agreements with abutting property owners to establish the boundary line of any property of the town, including boundary lines of right-of-way? Article 42. Shall the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to make final determinations regarding closing or opening of roads to winter maintenance pursuant to 23 MRSA 2953? Article 43. Shall the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to spend funds from various capital, from various reserve funds as it deems necessary in accordance with the capital improvement program? Article 44. Shall the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to notify the Commissioner of the Department of Marine Resources that it wishes to exercise its rights to alibis in the Madomic River for the 2019, for the year 2019? So, that is the end. And I thought that was pretty quickly read. Any questions?
I'm tired.
Just a quick one. I assume that the reserve fund that was being created for the Town Manager's discretionary was within the Town Manager's budget?
No.
So, did it not get created as a warrant article?
No. We did not, we did not do that. That's an item that the Budget Committee, one of the things that we're going to be discussing with the Budget Committee, because I viewed their role, and I was hoping the Select Board would, and I think everybody supported it, that we need to have a serious conversation about a fund like that, also about how we fund our capital projects, which we need to make a decision and we need to have a discussion. There's two various ways to look at it. You can say, well, we can save every year and eventually have enough money to do something. And then, you run the risk of people who are here saving for money for something they may never see. Or you can bond it. And then, you are then taxing the people who are getting the use of that service or piece of equipment. But we have to have our, how we're going to fund things. Obviously, there's a lot of projects that people are very passionate about in town. And, and I think we need to, you know, develop that 10-year capital plan and then discuss how, in the future, we're going to fund it. And I think that's a very big piece of what the Budget Committee should be looking at. I know you didn't attend any of the Budget Committee meetings, but what I think I wanted to hit home was, you know, we had roughly a 40, I forget the exact amount, increase, and then they did add some more money for salt. We spent, I'm going to say, six of the eight hours on the operating budget, which had an increase of less than a percent. And about 45 minutes on the capital. And, and in my view, and I understand it was my first budget, and that's how it's always been done, but we really have to have a serious conversation. If we really went to move ahead, we have to have a very serious conversation about how we fund things. that we need to have a serious conversation about a fund like that, also about how we fund our capital projects, which we need to make a decision and we need to have a discussion. There's two various ways to look at it. You can say, well, we can save every year and eventually have enough money to do something. And then you run the risk of people who are here saving for money for something they may never see. Or you can bond it. And then you are then taxing the people who are getting the use of that service or piece of equipment. But we have to have our, how we're going to fund things. Obviously, there's a lot of projects that people are very passionate about in town. And I think we need to, you know, develop that ten-year capital plan and then discuss how, in the future, we're going to fund it. And I think that's a very big piece of what the Budget Committee should be looking at. I know you didn't attend any of the Budget Committee meetings, but what I think I wanted to hit home was, you know, we had roughly a forty, I forget the exact amount increase, and then they did add some more money for salt. We spent, I'm going to say, six of the eight hours on the operating budget, which had an increase of less than a percent. And about forty-five minutes on the capital. And in my view, and I understand it was my first budget, and that's how it's always been done, but we really have to have a serious conversation. If we really went to move ahead, we have to have a very serious conversation about how we fund things in this town. And it's an important conversation to have. And it's not an easy, and there's, like I said, there's two different schools of thoughts. And I think that, you know, hopefully between the Budget Committee and the Select Board, we can have a couple of meetings and really talk about how we handle our debt and what, with a ten-year capital plan, what we want to see in the future of Waldenborough.
The reason I asked the question was, I'm, I think, as you know, all know, I'm a strong advocate of providing the town manager with a small pot of money so that she can save a lot of money. Basically, it was the, with the approval of the Select Board, but ad hoc, so there's not a budget item, we don't have, like, street lighting, let it go for a whole year and not capture the savings for a year. It just seems like a very, that's different than the capital budget per se.
Right.
I'm not questioning that.
Right, but we did have that discussion, and that's going to be lumped in with the rest of that discussion.
Any other comments? So citizens' comments?
Can I faint now?
A small clap would be okay.
My name is John Higgins, resident of the town of Waldenborough, and I'm going to bring up an old subject. Has to do with recording these events, Selectmen's Transfer Station Comprehensive. We stop, we start the meeting by turning the machine on. We end in turning it off. But we don't generate anything on the website. Transfer Station, the last time they done that was 7/13/2017. They not have a video for the public to see since then on our website. I hate to say the Budget Committee is 2015, but that's fine. It's a long time.
I will take full responsibility for the Budget Committee meetings this year because it was just Julie operation error, not understanding the system.
And since February, we have not had one Selectment meeting.
Some of that is operation error, and some of it is that LCTV had lost an employee.
Yeah, I understand that.
And they had trouble reloading it. So that should be resolved. So we should have now, I know our last Select Board meeting is up there, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, if you go to the town website and go to Committees, there's a link there to LCTV. You got to click on the link, John, and it'll take you to every meeting that we've recorded, that we've recorded.
And sometimes the problem we had for a little bit was the, with changes that LCTV made because they just got rid of all kinds of meetings, they purged. I'm not even sure our link right now is working. You might have to go to LCTV directly and look up our meetings.
It worked today.
Okay.
It did work today.
Good. I wasn't sure if that had gotten resolved. Well, see, now you'll still love me. We're all good.
No problem.
You want the citizens' comments, yeah?
She wants to come up.
Jeanne Lawrence.
I have two good things, okay? First of all, we're going to be celebrating Memorial Day weekend, and Memorial Day, when we remember the persons from our town especially, but also our whole country, who have given their lives in service to this country. And I wanted to call to your attention that in the magazine Memories of Maine, there is an article, "Waldenborough's Revolutionary War Servicemen." And it tells the story of the men from Waldenborough who wanted to be Continental Soldiers. Now, there were some that stayed here and were what you would call today the National Guard. But these men wanted to serve with George Washington, and you had to be a Continental Soldier in order to serve with George Washington. And so by hook or crook, they got down to Boston, raised their hand, volunteered. And this is the story of those men. And particularly, of course, one of our favorites, favorite and famous ones, Conrad Hayer. But all the other men that were part of Washington's Military Guard, they were his personal guard, they were with him all the time and protected him, came from Waldenborough. Now, they were known as Massachusetts men, but we know they were really Mainers. These magazines are free. You'll find some free ones on the shelf in Hanniford's. There are some in the library. There were some here in the, in the town office. And there are also a few at the Historical Society. So I commend the article to you. You will, I think, enjoy it. The second thing is I have an invitation for the Board and for the citizens of Waldenborough. The trustees of the Waldenborough Historical Society invite the Select Board members of the town of Waldenborough to attend the 50th Anniversary Celebration of the Society at the museum on Sunday, June 17, 2018. The museum will open at noon, and we've got all kinds of wonderful things going on, cake and ice cream, and a real German band playing music. So I leave these two things with you and hope that you will join us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you. Seth? Just two things, a report from the New Renewable Energy Subcommittee. I'm pleased to say that Sundog Solar has just done a little bit of, not remedial, but finishing, cleaning up landscaping and so forth. I think they've taken their Bobcats, so I think they're done, which means our solar array is complete. And the more exciting thing about that is we've just broken thirty-five megawatts of power in a little over a month. We're a little ahead of, on track to saving our first twenty-five hundred dollars for the municipal electric bill this year, which is pretty nice. It was what we planned on, and we're right on track. I had a question for the Select Board. The Recreation Committee, the newly authorized Recreation Committee, it's been a while since I've heard anything about it. Some of us have, including myself, have put in a membership application. I just wondered where the process was, what's happening, what's the timeline, when decisions will be made? I haven't been contacted for an interview, for example. Just that.
Go ahead, Julie.
Come on, me. That's going to be done at the same time we sent out letters to the existing Board, Board and Committee members, asking if they would like to be reappointed. And it will probably be, I'm going to say, end of June, beginning of July.
So it was basically put on hold? Is that correct?
Well, it was, I'm not going to say it was put on hold, but I said, I decided that that would be the most expeditious use of our, of our time. That way, everybody's here. And it can also change, the committee that's going to potentially be interviewing people can change too with the.
Sure, okay. Just curious.
Select Board.
Any other citizens' comments?
Sure, I have one.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
So my name's Kathy Osborne, and I am a member at the Broad Bay Congregational Church, the corner of Main Street and Pleasant Street, and we're having a concert this Friday evening at seven o'clock to introduce the community to a capital campaign that we are kicking off there. We have been selected as one of fourteen congregations in an inaugural funding that Partners for Sacred Spaces, the National Trust for something or other, they're offering us two hundred and fifty thousand dollars if we can raise five hundred thousand dollars. So we're been, we're undergoing that task. We've just voted to go, yay, charge ahead. And this is a concert by Karen Lilly-Pox, who's the Methodist Church pastor. She's coming into our church to sing and offer this concert. It's kind of a fundraiser, but it's more of an introduction to what we're doing and what our plans are, what we want to do with seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is to make that space more accessible to our community. We want to put, we want the front doors to open outward rather than inward for safety issues. In case of fire, you need to push doors outward. We want to put a lift in so that people can, and we'll regrade the sidewalks so handicapped people can roll up and into the North X and then get on a lift and go to the sanctuary or to the fellowship hall. And there will be also an ADA compliant restroom on the sanctuary level of the church, which would be great because the bathrooms there are primitive. And I was going to come in, I think, and talk as to impacts with the downtown community, but, you know, I missed the change there. So I'm sticking this comment in. It's citizens' comments time.
Thank you.
What's the timeline on raising the funds?
We have a very aggressive timeline. We're raising money this summer. We're kind of going into the silent mode of your traditional capital campaign, looking internally, and will be more talking to community members towards the end of this summer. And hopefully, by the end of the summer, August, September, we'll have like a really formal kickoff and go into like small funds. It'll hopefully fill in the gap. And we're, we need to be wrapped up by December, basically. The fund is, so it's, but we have consultants and partners in this. We've gotten a lot of training. I'm one of the co-chairs on the Steering Committee, and I feel really confident about it. The consultants we have to help us do it are really, really good at what they do. And they're Maine-based consultants, and they've helped with a lot of different projects. And so if you come, you'll learn more. We've got a little pamphlet we'll hand out to the concert, seven o'clock.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more citizens' comments?
I'm here, so I might as well say.
You might as well.
I might as well.
You going to say it, though?
No, God, you wouldn't want to hear me. It's terrible, even my daughter cringes. I actually came to the wrong meeting at the wrong time, but I'm glad I'm here because I want to make sure everybody has seen the wonderful flags flying. The firemen have done a marvelous job. There should be an article in tomorrow's paper about that. And I want to point out Ian Kennedy because she organized a penny drive for donations for the flags over at Miller, and we've already got over two hundred dollars, and they're still accumulating. And I think it was such a marvelous opportunity to involve the children, to get little civic education for them, and now they can see all the flags flying. I'm very grateful to everybody who has been supportive of that endeavor. We have, I don't know, forty more flags to put up, but we don't have the money for it, so we're still fundraising. And while I'm here, I might as well ask about Old Route One and the ditch. Is it ever going to be fixed? Because that's where the flags were going to go. Benner Hill down to Kayla's Corner, is anybody?
The ditch.
Old Route.
Well, the washout.
Yes, that's something that the state is working on.
The state is good.
Yeah.
So I think I would, you know, we'll still collect money and try to get the flags and whatnot, but wait until, and that is fixed.
Katie?
Are you going to put any along Route One?
No, that has not been covered by CMP at all. We just, what we did was to take, assume Atlantic Highway, the, where the roads go from Atlantic Highway into the center of town. That was the objective, to cover those roads.
You're not going to put any along Route One?
I only have right now, no, I only have, right now, I only have, only, I think it was a hundred and twenty-six poles to cover.
We did do, there is prior approval for Route One. The issue is how they have to be. Because of the traffic load there, there are some issues that would have to be resolved. So we went for the easy fruit first.
And I would point out that coming down the hill, there are no poles.
No poles up there.
It's just empty, empty area.
Any pole on Route One would, would work. I mean, they go right through Thomaston. Why can't, why can't we go?
It's just, from what I understood, from what our previous agreement was when they got them approved a couple of years ago, there were some issues. So we just have to be cognizant of, because they're going to be uneven. So they either have to be lower or higher, and that, so that's when we went with.
I think that was when John Blodgett was looking at it.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, so we have to, a little more time and effort has to be put into that.
Bob?
Could you please remind us where to make the contributions to purchase the rest of those flags?
Absolutely. There actually is a large poster on the bulletin board outside. It is to the Lions Club Post Office Box, the Waldo.
Thank you.
And he's absolutely marvelous in terms of keeping me up to date on donations.
So anything, you'll take anything, any money?
Anything that I can spend. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen?
It's a nice change. Because the flags were brought up, I want to just say that the Waldenborough Business Association has just mailed a check for two hundred and fifty dollars to the, to the flags. And we will be giving a giant check to Ellen Winch and Batch next Wednesday, the 30th. We have the WBA General Membership Meeting. We're having it at the Odd Elwives Brewery.
Oh, wow.
Thank you.
That was the meeting.
Okay. Any more citizens' comments? Select Board comments? All I had under, under this was, "The flags are excellent." And I'd like to thank all of those involved in making that happen, Cherylene, Anne, Jan, the kids. You all, I've done some initial stuff. No, whole fire department. I mean, I've watched them do some stuff, so it's excellent, it really is. Thank you very much.
Everyone's being thanked in that letter to the editor that will go in the paper hopefully this week.
Thank you very much. Katie?
I'd just like to remind everyone that Monday is Memorial Day Parade. Want to invite everyone there. It'll be, we'll have lineup out here at between eight and eight-thirty. And kickoff will be nine o'clock. We go down Jefferson Street to Main Street, down the hill to the monument, where we will have a ceremony down there. We've got a couple of new things that we're going to be doing this year too that is in, with the veterans and what they stand for. So if you have any kids, we'd love to have the kids in the parade too. Decorate your bikes, and we used to do this a long time ago.
Excuse me, if I may interject on that note. I've invited all the children from Miller School to dress in patriotic clothes and march, and the American Legion is going to give each of them a flag if they come here and line up and march.
There'll be, there'll be two people here to line everybody up accordingly. So that'll be great. I've always wanted the kids to get back in, into this. But kickoff is nine o'clock, and it's going to be right down there at the.
I put in the Miller School newsletter for everyone to be here by eight-thirty.
That's fine. So. That's fine. That'll be great.
It could be five, or there could be fifty, who knows? But by having the penny drive at school, and it hopefully generated some interest.
We're also getting Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Little Leaguers.
Right.
So if you know any of those people too, they're more than welcome to march in the parade. And if it's rainy, we're still going to do it. We just won't have the sound or anything. We're just going to congregate down at the bridge for a small ceremony and go from there.
The Elwives Project that I've been working on for the last couple of years, trying to get my ducks in a row, well, they finally lined up this past week. We had Sam Chapman, Ted Moley, DMR's biologist, the Elwives Association Director. We had one harvester that was in the, in the audience, Julie, myself. We met with the Washington Select Board and talked to them about possibly getting access into Washington Pond. And they're very excited about it. Julie had come up with a plan that, there's been a money issue with this as far as removing dams or obstructions of the river all the way to Washington Pond. And a lot of the grants that are accompanied with that usually do not typically look at anything less than a hundred thousand. So it's got to be, one town will not reach that goal of a hundred thousand dollar grant to facilitate any work. So Julie came up with doing a shared service agreement with the town of Washington to hopefully build a grant big enough to facilitate something like this. And they're going to, we met last Wednesday with them, and they're going to send us a letter saying that they're, they're willing to work with us to do a shared service agreement and open up Washington. and open up Washington Pond for Alwives for potentially in the near future of harvest. You know, it's going to take several years, but that's the big hurdle, is getting access to the ponds and open up habitat for them. And the river's clean enough now, and we've done a lot of work with, with water quality that we've improved, improved the lifestyle of the Alwives to thrive, so. And now we just got to get access, get them access to the ponds, so. And it opens up, Washington Pond opens up around 550 acres, more than what we have right now, almost over double what we have right now, so.
They're happy little Alwives now.
Yeah.
Too bad they're going to be smoked.
Or fish food.
But, but, yeah.
Thank you.
What's the town match for the grant, if any? We're going to shoot for nothing.
Really?
That's what, that's my plan. That's the way my, Joe.
That's the way he works.
Joe Lawrence can contest to that. That's my.
It's one of those things that I know when Abden says, hey, do this, it means, and don't spend any money to do it.
The Alwives founding, the Alwives Association has big contacts with Salmon Federation, and organizations like that are willing to open up access, you know, help with access like that, so. So they have mon, they have a lot of money, so.
One of the things that is important, and I think this is something that, that Abden's found, and I, I think it gotten, it's come from the Shellfish Committee, I think, in large part. Right now, we're writing, we have written three grants for River Gauge for part of the Madomic Project. So a $14,000 River Gauge, our share should, by the time we're done with all these grants, should be absolutely nothing. And it's because we partner so well. And I think that everybody feels a little bit more comfortable with partnering because of the Shellfish Committee's success with partnering, partnering with UMO, the DMR. So I think that goes really well, so that when we go to another town, we can say, well, we've done this before. So even though, you know, Washington doesn't really know us that well, you know, we can point to, this is what we've done, this is how we've gotten money in the past, and it's worked. So I think that's really important that.
I think it eases, eases other municipalities as far as going into something blind. Well, we're not going into it blind. We've, we've, we've got this track record. We just want to bring you along with it, so.
And the only, we do have a private landowner we have to have a conversation with, but, you know, those are things that, you know, we're close. It's the closest we've been, so.
And just to piggyback that a little bit, for, for us who are in the lobstering industry, I have to get my spring bait in Warren, Cooper's Mills, Damascada, or wherever, all around us. And a lot of sums of money go to all of these towns, and we should be getting that right here. I'll comment to Julie, Jesus.
No, he won't comment. He will text to Julie every day he gets bait.
I just spent $150, which should be asked, you know, but it's, it's very important. I know it's a long process.
What are you doing?
Yeah.
What are you doing?
It's, it's, you know, we're not going to be the size of Warren's. Warren's run. They harvest about 4,000 bushel a year. They built a brand-new fire station with that money that they received from the Alwives, so.
Watch them do one death, and it's like $300, and I mean, it's a matter of $10,000.
But it's not going to be the size of that, but it's bringing something back that was here.
That we always had.
35, 40 years ago. I remember it, so it's been at least, it's been at least 35, 30, 35 years since we've been harvested.
Oy, I give it after green.
Mine's fat, I remember.
So.
Filled up 64 Rambliff Fire Box. Anyway, just saying. Any other comments?
Just a reminder, and I'll be saying this probably during every meeting until the end of August, because there are so many events going on in town or getting organized to go on in town. The Waldorf Theater is putting together a fundraiser called Raising the Roof. It'll be in August 1st. Really nice, something to mark on your calendars and think about.
Get tickets now. They're going like hotcakes.
Yep. The Broughton Brew, which is a fundraiser for the library, is on July 7th. We're going to extend the hours a little bit. It was a little short last year. And then there'll be a, an auction afterward, a lot of interesting things up for auction. And then Paint the Town, which we've done every year for the last, it's 2005, I think, will be, I believe, during the first week of August. So keep your ears open for the, for the activities as news about them evolves. They're, they're a good, fun to do, and there will be more coming, I'm sure. Not to mention Waldeboro Day.
Coming right up.
Yep.
Karen?
Well, I was just looking at this, and Julie.
They look rustic.
Julie is a photographer in one of her other lives, jobs, and she did this. So after listening to, looking at this and then listening to Abden, next year, maybe on the back of this, we'll have some Alwives, or at least an Alwife picture. And as for new people, Alwife, it looks like ale, but it's really pronounced L, just an L. L-Y. So that, but really what I wanted to talk about, a couple of things. Julie mentioned communication earlier, too. If you look at our website, you will see a newsletter that she has put together with the help from this, that, and others. So, and she's going to do that in a.
Quarterly.
Yes, a quarterly. Regular is all I was going to say. Could be once a year. Quarterly basis, so be sure and take a look at that, some interesting things that you can see about your community. But the other thing is to talk about what Kathy Osborne was saying. And as far as partnerships and how those work really well, the Broad Bay Church had a, I don't know, a couple of years ago, they had people interviewing community people, all over the community, people who are not related to that church in any way. And that's how they got the idea that, yes, they in fact probably can raise the money. And they have invited people on the board who are not members of that church, who don't attend that regularly. And so they really want community effort, partnership, shared stuff. So one of the things, what they're doing is they got this national recognition, one of 14 churches in the entire country, right here in Waldeboro. And it's in collaboration with the Nat, the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Broad Bay was selected because of the historical value of the church building and its demonstrated commitment to strengthening community partnerships. The, according to Nancy Duncan, who is the minister there, "The church is welcoming space for our worshiping congregation as well as for members of the community who come from meetings, lectures, concerts, funerals, and weddings or potluck suppers. The fellowship hall welcomes a variety of community groups, including AA, Garden Club, Restorative Justice, Waldeboro Historical Society, women, infants, and children, and other organizations." So they really are an integral part of, of our community. And their location, they were talking about it being on the corner of Main and Pleasant, and I thought that was really kind of a cute, a cute way of thinking of it, because they are a main event place in this community, and they are very pleasant. So I hope you'll go to the concert. Karen Lilly-Pox is a professional pianist, and it's, it's her, and three of her friends who are musically inclined will be there.
The, having written and successfully received one of the National Historic Trust grants, it's quite an accomplishment. And it's, it's, they're not easy. And it's, it's one of the most interesting experiences they will ever have, when you actually, if they actually get to do it, and, and the requirements for it. And I was very lucky. We, when we started it, we had the grant. Then we ran short of money, and luckily, there was a very nice musician in New Jersey who helped us out.
Maybe you could invite him here for a weekend.
Sure. We'll do that.
And the Memorial Day Parade that's coming up there, I always have coffee at my house because the parade comes to me, and then I follow it down to the landing. But, so there's coffee at my house if you want to come watch the parade. If it's raining, I have a porch.
Okay. Thank you. Julie?
My report was really boring, but I did something really fun today, so I thought I would share. So this morning, I started out my day at the Bristol Swimming Hole, learning how to take water samples. So that was, that was quite interesting. But one, couple, two things happened. One was, it, it was the, the Bristol, they're, they're doing a lot of sampling in Bristol for many reasons. And we are held, Waldeboro is held in high esteem for our sampling of the Madomic and what we've been able to do. So I was very proud to be part of that. But then, this afternoon, so that was okay. I didn't like fall in the water or anything like I thought I would, so that was really, really, really important not to make fool of myself. So in partnership with the DRA, the Damascada River Association, they're going to let us use their laboratory for testing for our river, which is pretty cool. So myself, Gabrielle, Gabriella, Gabby Hillier from UMO, who is our resident graduate student, and Maggie Burns from FB Environmental, who's doing our watershed base plan, and I went for training to be able to actually do the testing right there, which is convenient because it's, you know, a four-minute walk from my house. So one of the great things that will give us the availability now is if we have a storm, and if we have certain people who will take us out on their boat, Glenn and Abden, and let, get us samples if they bring them, and it doesn't matter what day it is, because now I can go to the DRA and I can conduct these samples. So we were trained today, and I have to tell you, it was really cool. They showed you how to do everything. It has to be a very sterile environment, and then you get to look at it under ultraviolet light, and it was just, it, it took me back to like ninth grade biology, and I had to put it on Facebook because Mr. Di Eugenio, who is one of my friends on Facebook, who was my biology teacher, will be very proud to know that I did well. And it just made my day. And, you know, I was thinking about this. A year and 22 days ago, I never would have thought, the first day of my career in Waldeboro, when Glenn Melvin walked into my office and explained to me life, that a year and 22 days later, that I would be so immersed in the Madomic that I am now, that I'm actually going to be testing. So at 2:00 in the morning, if people go out and test, by 2:00 in the, the next, the next day in the morning, I will be able to tell you if it's a hot sample or not.
Excellent.
Just don't take the airboat.
Please.
Is that early in the morning? Come on.
Oh, it's pretty early.
Who's you now?
I'm done. It's just, I'm, it's just one of those things about Waldeboro, you just, it's just an amazing little place. It really is.
Okay. Consent calendar?
I moved to accept the consent calendar.
You have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Thank you. Full business, none, new business, 10.1, award tax, acquired property.
And that should have been in your packet.
It is.
The high, the high bid was from Derek Parland. Am I reading that right?
Correct.
Yep. He was producing Alwives, too. Just a second.
There's three of them, and more.
Yeah, but he's the high bidder by a large.
Four of them.
Yeah. I, I move, we accept the bid of Derek A. Parland for $25,250.
You have a second?
A second.
Discussion. All those in favor? And what else is on there?
The Pine Street Land.
We've heard on that, right?
Yep.
Okay. 10.2, Ward Pine Street Landing bid to Farley.
Farley Incorporated, they were the lowest bidder at $264,900. And we also have gotten approval from Main D, well, Main DOT for the ship grant, so that we were given clearance to be able to award. So it's all been reviewed by our engineer and also by the DOT so that we can award this. So that was all we were waiting for.
Charlie's out of Rockport.
Farley is out of Rockport, and to be very honest with you, he was the lowest bidder, but he was also a bidder that both the engineer and John were very happy.
And got a lot of stuff.
And it's very good work. So they were very happy with that, so we were very happy.
It was in our price range, correct?
It was in our price range, and it was, the next closest bid was $399,000.
It's a board's pleasure.
Make a motion to award the bid to Farley.
A second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Thank you. No executive session?
Yes, we do. We need one for Bill. Bill Brock. You see Daryl, you know you got to stay.
Kind of figure. Do you have a motion to win executive session?
Before we do that, I just want to commend Jean Lawrence with a great job she did.
Oh, yes.
She's gone now, but she did an amazing job.
Yep. She was a good teacher.
Yep.
Daryl, you going to turn that off, honey?
You pause it?
I don't know. Let Katie do it.
Who's the guy in the checkered shirt?
That is Arvin. Rowan.
Oh, Karen's.
Karen's hubby.
Okay.
He's going to be on our, hopefully, on our budget committee. She is a Karen.
Oh, yeah, Karen is.